Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is May 24, 2022. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it comes in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for In honor of the police memorial, the Kettering Police Department color guard was going to present the colors this evening. Unfortunately, the color guard is unable to make it this evening, so we will now proceed with the rest of our agenda. At this point, I would like to offer an invocation. Dear Lord, we pray for unity. We have come together as a group united in passion and purpose. Help us maintain unity as we discuss certain matters and implement projects. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. We seek your honor in everything we do and say, and we ask for your blessings for our community and for all who need our prayers and assistance. Amen. And please keep the people fighting in Ukraine in your prayers, particularly the civilians. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Paul Sporani.
Paul.
I mean, Mike. I don't know where Paul came from. Maybe Paul's up there today. Mike, thank you for your assistance. Where's your wave? There you go. Okay. Mrs. Fisher has an excused absence this evening, so I'm going to call Mr. Kleipas for a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank your honor. I have reviewed the council meeting and regular council meeting and the council workshop minutes from the May 10 meetings, found them to be in order, and I move for their approval.
Second. Okay. No objections, comments? Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes. We have no proclamations or special presentations this evening. We have no public hearings this evening. This is the point on our agenda that anyone wishing to speak before council without with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Don't see anyone coming forth? Okay. We will now go to ordinances and second reading. Mr. Kleipas, can you start out first?
Okay. Thank your honor. I have an ordinance this evening in second reading to rezone 2001 East Dorothy Lane from Economic Development Overlay District Number 14 to B Business District Planning Commission Case Number PC 22-005. It is requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Mark, do you have any comments?
Thank you, your honor. This ordinance in second reading will rezone 2001 East Dorothy Lane from Economic Development Overlay Number 14 to B Business. This is necessary because economic development overlays are no longer an active part of our code, and the conversion to B Business will allow this property to be reutilized and investments made. Again, it is an ordinance in second reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Schwederman? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes. Now move on to resolutions.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for remodeling of the Charles I Lathrum Center at the Kettering Recreation Complex. The amount, the cost is estimated to be $213,500. The amount budgeted is $213,500, and this is being requested by the Public Services Department.
Thank you. Move for approval?
I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, your honor. This resolution will authorize us to get quotes for improvements at the Lathrum Center. This is part of the Lathrum family donation projects. The projects will include wall painting, floor refinishing, new room dividers, lighting, technology, and equipment improvements in the main lobby, studios A and B, the billiard room, and the library. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes. Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining
and negotiated quotes to contract for the installation of security cameras around the exterior of the Kettering Recreation Complex. Estimated cost is $45,000. Amount budgeted is $45,000, requested by the Public Service Department. Move for approval.
So moved. Second. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, your honor. Resolution Number Three relates to security cameras at the Kettering Recreation Complex. We intend to install approximately seven or eight cameras at the complex. The cameras will be at the each main entrance of the facility, and there's essentially three: the water park, the CIL, and the main entry for the recreation center. And then we also have additional security cameras throughout the parking lots. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the Board of Education of the Kettering City School District for the Safety Section Program for the 2022-2023 school year. This is being requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, your honor. This is our annual resolution with the Kettering Board of Education to share in the cost of providing adult crossing guard functions and other school-related crossing guard duties within designated elementary schools around the district. This is a shared cost contract. We receive approximately $65,000 from the school board to share in the cost of the service. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any more questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as the responsible lead agency for administration of the Woodman Drive Resurfacing Wilmington Pike to Stocker, City Project Number 02-106V, ODOT Project MOT, Woodman Drive Resurfacing, PID 116890, requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, your honor. This resolution and the next two resolutions are in relation to projects that we submitted to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission this past fall for funding, and we were successful on three of them. This first one is resurfacing a section of Woodman Drive from Wilmington Pike to Stocker, which is about the southern third or so of Woodman Drive in Kettering. This project is essentially a resurfacing project. We are receiving $465,474 in coronavirus response money that MVRPC received. Currently, we are anticipating construction to start sometime in the spring of 2023 for this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Wilmington Pike Resurfacing, East Stroop to Beaverton, City Project Number 02-108PA, ODOT Project MOT Wilmington Pike, Resurfacing PID 116893, requested by Engineering Department. Move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstresser, do you have anything further you, on this one?
Yes, just briefly, your honor. Similar to the previous resolution, this one is for a resurfacing project on Wilmington Pike from East Stroop Road to Beaverton, which is just south of the intersection with Dorothy Lane. Same type of project on Woodman Drive. It is a resurfacing project, and we are anticipating construction next year in 2023. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the Marshall Road Improvements, East David to Wilmington, City Project Number 02-120I, ODOT Project MOT- Marshall Road Improvements, PID 116891.
Okay, Steve.
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, your honor. Again, similar to the previous two, this one is for Marshall Road from East David to Wilmington Pike. Similar to the other two, it's a primarily resurfacing project along that section of Marshall, but it also does include a construction of an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, widened sidewalk, to connect from the area around Lincoln Park Boulevard up to Wilmington Pike to provide a better pedestrian and bike connection in that area. Construction at this point is anticipated for state fiscal year 2027, so it's a number of years away. However, this one is one that we are fast-tracking internally to have the design right away completed in anticipation of potentially having funds available sooner than 2027. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution Number 10645-21 and allow grant funds to be expended on landscape design. Move for approval.
Second. Let's see. Mark.
Thank you, your honor. This resolution will amend Resolution Number 10645-21 with the Kettering Parks Foundation to expand the authorized use of the Rosewood Art Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Grant to include landscape design. As you know, the Kettering Parks Foundation is raising private funds to reimburse the city for FFNE. However, the original grant did not specify that landscape design was an authorized use. In this amendment, we'll take care of that issue. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving participation in the Region Eight governance structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. This is being requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hamler.
Thank you, your honor. This resolution concerns the city's participation in Region Eight of the State of Ohio under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. That MOU is an agreement between the State of Ohio and participating local governments to jointly approach settlement negotiations and litigation with drug manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The MOU divides Ohio into 19 regions. Kettering is in Region Eight. Each region must create its own governance structure, and this resolution approves the proposed government structure for Region Eight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution Number 10645-21 and allow grant funds to be expended on landscape design. Move for approval.
Second. Let's see. Mark.
Thank you, your honor. This resolution will amend Resolution Number 10645-21 with the Kettering Parks Foundation to expand the authorized use of the Rosewood Art Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Grant to include landscape design. As you know, the Kettering Parks Foundation is raising private funds to reimburse the city for FFNE. However, the original grant did not specify that landscape design was an authorized use. In this amendment, we'll take care of that issue. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Your honor, I have an emergency ordinance to amend Section 476.03 of the Codified Ordinance Regarding Operation of Snowmobiles and All-Purpose Vehicles and Declaring an Emergency requested by the Law Department. Declaring an emergency, move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hamler.
Thank you, your honor. This emergency ordinance will amend Section 476.03 of the Codified Ordinances so that that section does not conflict with the Uniform Firearms Laws in the Ohio Revised Code. If approved, the ordinance will be effective immediately. Be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah. Everyone's seen in the news over the last couple of weeks about the U.S. mail issue in this area where boxes were actually had theft on them, and I know it put a lot of citizens at ease that still mail all their bills, receive checks. And I just want to give a big thank you to Kettering's Police Department, especially Chief Protsman, for a job well done in making some apprehensions and putting people's minds at ease. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
First of all, I would like to echo Mr. Kleipas' sentiments and congratulate Mr. Duke and Dawn and Nick on another great year of Kettering Leadership Academy. They were very impressive graduates. Unfortunately, I am from the best class ever, so sorry about that. I want to announce that on June 6, I will be hosting a town hall at Greenmont Elementary in the cafeteria. Mrs. Hall will be joining me, as well as Mr. Schwederman and Mr. Bergstresser. I believe Chief, you'll be there as well. It's a chance to hear updates on ongoing projects in the city and interact with people from the city, so I hope everyone can join us. Also, Juneteenth on June 20th, make sure to get your tickets online or in person. I found out today that Greenmont Village is having their 80th birthday on July 2. They're having a party, starts at 10:00 a.m. They're having a dog show, so that's kind of cool. And I would like to end with, there was a shooting today in Texas. As many as 15 students were killed. I just want to send thoughts to those families dealing with that. I can't imagine. So all of our thoughts go to those families, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, your honor. Sadly, those folks killed were in elementary school. Elementary school kids that ranged in age apparently from five to 10. Yeah, very sad. We did graduate the Kettering Leadership Academy class, and I want to thank Scott Inskeep, who served as our graduation speaker this year. Scott is the retiring superintendent of schools for Kettering. He did a nice job and talked about his leadership journey. Every year, the students are required to do projects, and one chose to do an art project that will be this summer. It will be a chalk art project in conjunction with our police department and our fire department, so look for word on that. And the other project that our class did is
Anybody else have any questions, comments? All right, seen none? Thank you, Mr. Schwederman. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before council this evening? Nobody? All right. Well, then, we will now move on to city council reports. Mr. Klepass?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. One, I, once again, want to congratulate Mr. Duke, Dawn, and Nick from the volunteer office. Most of us were able to attend the May 12 graduation of this year's Kettering Leadership Academy. Once again, the graduates were some of the finest representatives of the city. Every year, the folks continue to bring new candidates in and graduate great classes for future leaders in our city. Also, as a reminder to everyone, June 15 is Spasnak. It'll be held from 5:30 to 9:30. It is the annual event at Lincoln Park Commons. It's the fundraiser for the Sister Cities Committee. It's run by all volunteers. And just a reminder to everyone on council, you'll be getting a message from me very soon, and you'll be able to pick a time and a booth that you might want to volunteer in. So I'll look forward to seeing everyone there. And last, but not least, I got a text this week from a resident that when he received his summer edition of Contact Kettering, he said, "Hey, I saw your ad in the Contact Kettering." So I had to look and thank Mary for the ad. Now more than ever, support our local businesses. Shop, carry out, buy Kettering. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you. My ad, and he knows who it was. That's all I have, Mary.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hall?
I just wanted to mention that the fundraiser for Ukraine is still open. You can still donate to World Central Kitchen from the fundraiser that I hosted here a couple weeks ago. The situation continues to get worse, the humanitarian crisis, and more and more people are without food and living in seriously dire circumstances. With that, it's going to kick about 47 million people worldwide into serious hunger, and the food prices will eventually be felt here as well. So I had mentioned last, and between that and the energy prices going up, and I'm so encouraged that the city is pursuing that option of how to reduce energy, potential energy costs to its residents, that it's a great time for Victory Gardens. Between the energy costs, food costs going up, I wrote about Victory Gardens last year in the Kettering Summer Edition magazine, and I would be happy to answer questions about gardening or to give you the link to World Central Kitchen. I happen to live with a pro gardener who's turned a third of our backyard into a vegetable garden, and it's a great time to get started. And that email's jyl.hall@ketteringoh.org.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, everyone's seen in the news over the last couple of weeks about the US mail issue in this area where boxes were actually, had theft on them, and I know it put a lot of citizens at ease that still mail all their bills, receive checks. And I just want to give a big thank you to Kettering's Police Department, especially Chief Protsman, for a job well done in making some apprehensions and putting people's minds at ease. So thank you so much.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to echo Mr. Klepass's sentiments and congratulate Mr. Duke and Dawn and Nick on another great year of Kettering Leadership Academy. They were very impressive graduates. Unfortunately, I am from the best class ever, so sorry about that. I want to announce that on June 6, I will be hosting a town hall at Greenmont Elementary in the cafeteria. Mrs. Hall will be joining me, as well as Mr. Schwederman and Mr. Bergstresser. I believe Chief, you'll be there as well. It's a chance to hear updates on ongoing projects in the city and interact with people from the city, so I hope everyone can join us. Also, Juneteenth, on June 20th, make sure to get your tickets online or in person. I found out today that Greenmont Village is having their 80th birthday on July 2. They're having a party, starts at 10:00 a.m. They're having a dog show, so that's kind of cool. And I would like to end with, there was a shooting today in Texas. As many as 15 students were killed. I just want to send thoughts to those families dealing with that. I can't imagine. So all of our thoughts go to those families, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sadly, those folks killed were in elementary school. Elementary school kids that ranged in age apparently from 5 to 10. Very sad. We did graduate the Kettering Leadership Academy class, and I want to thank Scott Inskeep, who served as our graduation speaker this year. Scott is the retiring superintendent of schools for Kettering. He did a nice job and talked about his leadership journey. Every year, the students are required to do projects, and one chose to do an art project that will be, this summer, it will be a chalk art project in conjunction with our police department and our fire department, so look for word on that. And the other project that our class did is computer awareness for seniors. They're setting up a program in conjunction with the Lathrum Center where high school students will be working voluntarily with any senior at the Lathrum Center, helping them to master their iPad, their iPhone. As you know, anyone over 60 has a hard time, and anyone under 21 knows exactly what to do, so they'll be great. The deadline for applying for next year's program is coming up. It is in June, and so if any resident is interested in applying for the Kettering Leadership Academy, you can go to the city website. It is online. All the information you need is online for that. Mr. Klepass and I went downtown to the Juvenile Justice Center last week to experience something that is very special. Every year, Judge Anthony Capizzi, juvenile court justice, holds a drug court graduation. And the stories that are told on that day and the response of the parents that are listening to these young people and the journeys they go through really uplifts you. These kids have a very difficult time in life, and what they do in that court is just amazing work, and their recidivism rate is probably the lowest or one of the lowest in the country. These young people are graduating from high school, they're getting jobs, they're moving on with their lives, and it's just a great success story. It is Judge Capizzi's last year. He is retiring, and I just wanted to give a shout out to him. I want to close with, we lost a, not a well-known resident, but a very important resident to our community on May 15. A gentleman by the name of Carl Byer passed away on May 15. Carl was 92 years old. He came to Kettering in 1957 as the Associate State Editor for the Dayton Daily News. He became the news editor in 1965. He's the longest-serving Dayton Daily News news editor in their history. He was very successful. He was summoned by Lynn and Bayes Johnson to the White House for the unveiling of the Great Society Program, and his reputation as a journalist was quite effective. You might have read a lot of his work. He used to write editorials after he retired, you know, once a month or so in the paper and did a great job. I remember him, and I think Tony does and Peggy, going back years, since 19, I'm going to say '73 or '74, for more than 50 years. Every year, our city holds a budget workshop, and it is a Saturday normally, maybe more than one, and very few residents, if any, ever come to hear how we're going to spend our, around $100 million in this community. But every year faithfully, Roberta and Carl Byer always came to our budget workshop. They missed one. I talked to Roberta today, and she said, "Yep, we did miss one. We went to Williamsburg that year." So she's forgiven for that. But I asked them one time, I said, "Why do you do that? You're the only ones that come." Carl said, "Well, you know, I want to know how every dollar is spent in this community. It's my taxpayer money, and I want to make sure we're doing a good job." And Roberta looked at me, she had a, always had a twinkle in her eye, and she said, "I come because I just want to keep an eye on you rascals." That was Roberta. They were married 61 years, three daughters, five grandkids. On June 13, there will be a celebration of Carl's life at Pullen Farm. They were two of the original members of our Sister City program for the state of Ohio and have been with that program since its inception, probably the longest, perhaps the longest members ever in the history of that program. So a great family. Regards to Roberta and the family, and that's all I have, Your Honor. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Duke. My friends and family will be thrilled to know that I have signed up for the Computer Assistance Program for seniors.
Oh, yes.
I don't know. It probably won't work, but I'm willing to give something else a try. Before I move on to a couple of the other notes, I just want to comment on the shooting in Texas. Every time one of those happens, it almost feels daily lately. I remember the phone call I got about the shooting here in the Oregon District and know what a gut punch that is to a community, not to mention all the family that's involved. So certainly ask everyone to keep them in your prayers. On the brighter side of things, I did attend the Media Day for the U.S. Women's Senior Open. Was there a Media Day for the U.S. Women's Senior Open? And I can't work a cellphone, and I can't play golf, so I'm not sure where that puts me in the world of seniors, but anyway. But that's a great event to have for our community. People come from all over. They see what it... I know I heard Annika Sorensen was talking about her first impression when she saw the NCR Park, how fabulous it was and just a beautiful park, so we have a lot to be proud of with that. The one last thing I want to mention is this was a week of goodbyes. Mr. Duke mentioned Scott Inskeep, who will be retiring as our superintendent. We do have a new superintendent, Mindy McCarthy Stewart. She is starting, but she's in town right now doing a lot of shadowing, but she will start in a few weeks. We also said goodbye to Rhonda South, who has spent 35 years, I believe, in the Finance Department at the city. Is, we celebrated her retirement on Thursday. And then Ken Lackey, who is with the schools. I think Ken is another 30, 35-year person. Yeah, so we're losing some of our wonderful, wonderful staff, and Kettering really does have fabulous staff, so we're sorry to see them all go, but wish them all good retirement. So with that, I have no further business to bring before the meeting. Our next meeting will be on June 14, 2022, and this meeting is now adjourned.